Someone had another idea.
I'll let her.
Group, but that particular song.
At the right time. That'd be freaky. Let's do it. I know. I'm gonna see what we got in here.
About bone thugs?
Seven o'clock. So, uh, we're recording.
All right. Here we go. We're calling this meeting to order. Relax. Anyway. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. Uh, it's Tuesday, May 16th, and it's 7:00 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk to please call the rule.
Yes.
Jo Buganam?
Here.
Bill Kueckie?
Here.
Ixie Vega?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger? Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here. Very short today. I'm hoping I can get this chair adjusted. All right. Which one is it? It's right here, and you have to lift your weight.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good. Now, I'm really little. Thank you. All right. It's time for the pledge. All rise, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, approval of minutes, and we are looking at the April 18th regular meeting minutes. And, um, I'm gonna ask, it's by acclamation that we approve those? And, um, the next set of minutes will happen at the next meeting. And now we're on to correspondence. And we have something for our fellow city councilperson. So, we understand this is your last meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Mom, we'll see about that.
No, I mean in these quarters. So, we're gonna read a proclamation. And for those of you at home, it's very, very nice.
My mom's gonna be so excited for this.
Oh, good. Well, let her enjoy it. Whereas Ixie Vega was elected to Morgantown City Council for the Third Ward, beginning July 1st, 2021, through May 16th, 2023. She is the youngest, uh, council member to be elected. She's the first Latina to be elected. And she is the second write-in candidate to be elected. And whereas Counsel Vega served on the City of Morgantown Sister Cities Commission from July 1st, 2021, through May 16th, 2023, providing ideas, energy, and follow-through to the group. And whereas she advocated for non-English-speaking citizens in the Morgantown area on many occasions, and displayed a genuine interest in the youth within our community, helping to ensure that basic needs of our youth are met. She specifically provided airness of, um, period poverty, and celebrated National Period Action Day by communicating the need for supplies in our local high school. And whereas Counsel Vega represented City Council on the Sister Cities Commission by serving as host to the Ukrainian Women Veterans at a luncheon on March 28th, 2023, a time for intercultural interaction with the community. Their week-long visit was to learn U.S. services, programs, and resources for U.S. veterans and military service personnel. And whereas outside of her council role, her brave advocacy for abortion and women's rights, um, led her to several organizing campaigns in the community and at the West Virginia State Capitol. And whereas Counsel Vega also served with distinction on the Health and Wellness Commission from July 1st, 2021, through May 16th, 2023. And whereas Counsel Vega chaired her final committee of the whole meeting on March 28th, 2023, with fortitude and grace, and showing her exemplary service once again when called upon at a moment's notice. And whereas during her time on council, she performed quality service in an exceptional manner while on duty, and in the performance of the duties related to the city, she is truly deserving of this proclamation for her extraordinary individual contributions on behalf of Morgantown City Council toward the overall mission of the City of Morgantown. Now therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of city administration and the entire city, do express our most sincere appreciation to Ixie Vega, and hereby take this opportunity to publicly thank and honor her for her great service to the city. Um, and there's an official seal on it also. So, why don't you, uh, stand if you would? And we can hand this to you.
Thank you.
And maybe someone, if there's someone there that can take a picture, that would please your mom also. Thank you. Now it's yours.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
Do you have any words that you would like to say?
Yes, and I won't cry this time, I promise. Um, it has been an honor to serve as a representative in the City of Morgantown. It's not very common that you come to college and then end up helping make decisions for the college town that you're in, um, so I really appreciate it. I appreciate all of our staff for helping me answer any questions that I may have had. Um, I feel like I really tried my best to make sure I got answers for folks. Um, I appreciate the mayor. Thank you so much for walking through my ward with me and trying to find some solutions to some issues and for talking to me. Uh, thank you, Brian, um, for running with me in the beginning. Um, I could've risked your entire campaign, but you really took a shot for me, so I appreciate you a lot. Um, but, thank you so much.
Congratulations. So, now we are on to three public hearings. These public hearings, actually, there's four page, but these four public hearings are, um, only for specific items. So if you hear the item, and it's something that you wish to speak about specifically, this is your opportunity. And then, uh, later on, under Item 8, is the public portion, if you have comments to make that are general in nature. So, public hearings. The first one. An ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Seventh Ward of the City of Morgantown, Tax District 15, Tax Map 55, Parcel 92, from Pro, Professional, Residential, and Office District to B2, Service Business District, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown on the exhibit heretofore attached, and declared to be part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. So we're gonna open this public hearing. And if there's anyone wishing to speak, this is your moment, on this subject only. Then we're gonna close that public hearing. Then we're gonna go on to Item B. An ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Seventh Ward of the City of Morgantown, Tax District 15, Tax Map 55, Parcel 93, commonly known as 699 Borough Street, from Pro, Professional, Residential, and Office District to B2, Service Business District, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit heretofore attached, and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. So we're gonna open this public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this matter only? Otherwise, we're gonna close that public hearing and move on to Item C. An ordinance, uh, amending fiscal year 2022, 2023, annual budget of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the General Fund. So we're gonna open this public hearing. See if there's anyone wishing to speak. And we're gonna close that public hearing. Item D. An ordinance amending fiscal year 2022, 2023, annual budget of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the Cool Severance Fund. So we're gonna open this public hearing. Is there any wish, anyone wishing to speak? Then we're gonna close this public hearing and move on to unfinished business. Item A. Consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Seventh Ward of the City of Morgantown, Tax District 15, Tax Map 55, Parcel 92, from Pro, Professional, Residential, and Office District to B2, Service Business District, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit heretofore attached, and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. The first reading was 4/4/2023. So, um, we do not need to pound anyone in the gavel. And now we are going to, um, ask our planner if he would come forward and, um, tell us a little bit about this one. Understanding this is the second reading, so feel free.
I apologize that I couldn't be here for the first.
Oh, well, this is, this is, this is good.
Yeah. Um, so after consideration, uh, the applicant, or the applicant was requesting that Parcel 92 be rezoned from a Pro to a B2. Um, staff in review found it to be in, in, appears to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And after weighing all considerations at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, Planning Commission voted for it to, to move the application forward and recommend approval, uh, by Morgantown City Council.
Okay. So Planning Commission was for this?
Four to two, that was the vote.
Four to two, there was a vote. Yep. Oh, a little bit of a split. All right. And then, um, let's, um, move for approval if you all are willing, and then we can have discussion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. And now it's time for discussion, and I understand our deputy mayor may have something she wanted to say about this.
Um, I do. As the council representative on the Planning Commission, I feel my duty to explain to you all, uh, another discussion that happened at our Planning Commission last week. Um, I was not in attendance in person, but I did call in for matters of quorum, so I couldn't exactly see everything and who was there, but, um, I could hear. And we had some, so, these are two properties at the corner of Van Vors, there, near the BB&amp;T Bank. And a, and there were essentially three properties in the Pro District there, including these two that we are seeing tonight, as well as a third that used to be Wedgwood Family Practice, it's now a tax office, or, uh, whatever it is. The former Wedgwood Family Practice Building. Um, they came before the Planning Commission at last week's meeting, asking to also be rezoned from a PRO to B2. And the Planning Commission did have some concerns about that one specifically. Um, the two that we're looking at seem to have somewhat of a natural barrier, there's a little stream that kinda runs along the back of the properties. And this was not a unanimous vote from Planning Commission, it was four to two, with a few members being absent at the meeting that we took this vote. So, it wasn't exactly a, a unanimous thing. What we decided at last week's Planning Commission meeting was that the former Wedgwood Family Practice Building, um, we were looking at some of the uses that are permitted in the Pro District, and things that we kinda feel would be appropriate for a space like that are currently not allowed. So we put that third property on hold for rezoning recommendations until such time that we look at, and we're going to do this imminently, um, but we're going to look at things that are permitted, or conditional use, or not permitted in the Pro District, and then reassess and reevaluate if it actually needs rezoned or not, or if we can just change some of the uses to a more modern, updated, like, someone made mention, a small neighborhood style bakery could not even go in that district, in the Pro District there, whereas we would allow that in a neighborhood business district. Like, we have neighborhoods with bakeries or coffee shops, those kinds of things are not permitted in Pro. So, we're going to look at that, and I wanted to be very upfront, I done, I did not know if we wanted to also put these two on hold until such time that we do that, and look at them all, um, all at once, not necessarily together, one property doesn't affect the other two properties, per se, but, um, just, just telling you what was done at last week's meeting. And Counselor Butcher and I did receive, myself as the Planning Commission representative, and Counselor Butcher as that area's representative, we have received communications from a resident there asking us to put this on hold until such time that the Planning Commission completes its, um, assessment of the PRO.
So, we put these two on hold. The other property is adjacent to the neighborhood, and kinda has different characteristics compared to these two. One lot's never been built on, and the other one, or never in recent memory been built on, the other one has a seemingly thriving business on it. Planner, are you willing to come back up again and talk about this? And maybe our attorney as well? Usually we look at these properties kind of separately. I, I don't know.
Would it be helpful? Might be helpful to read a little bit from the, the communication that we received.
Yes. Do you have additional comments before we have?
I think a little piece of it, I think, did, was fairly compelling.
It what?
A little piece of it was fairly, uh, compelling. They, um, uh, they said, "However, I do not, uh, believe that the solution is to rezone these properties B2, which would enable by right the development of noisy commercial dog kennels, towering hotels, and light-polluting gas stations immediately adjacent to a neighborhood of primary single-use." primary single-use detached residential homes. The petitioners may not be planning development of any of these properties in such a way, but any future owners of these properties are empowered with the right to develop in such a manner. Instead, I believe that it's best to, is in the best interest of the community to change what is permitted in Pro zones, a bakery, brew, brew pub, coffee shop, or even mixed-use building with small shops on the first floor, and residential units on the second floor, that are disallowed in Pro today, which could easily enable economic development that should, uh, at the threshold between residential and commercial zones." The reason why I find that compelling is because, um, it does seem, you know, if, if we're not allowing for mixed-use property, residential property, and, and business property in, in Pro zones, um, then it does seem, uh, does seem like we're not necessarily modern with what, like, a Pro zone might try to accomplish, which is like, you know, a buffer between neighborhoods, so you have residential business. But that was just like, the piece of that public comment that he wanted, that seemed most compelling to me, so, just wanted to.
No, good to have the full information.
But what were you asking Ricky?
So, so here we are. Maybe this is more legal question, I'm not sure. So, here we are, we're on the second reading of something. Why B2? Were there other options besides B2 that would have been less development-oriented and more development-next-to-neighborhood-oriented?
The property across the street's B2, right? From 93.
Correct. Across Van Boris is B2, and that's in the city limits. And then, in a butts, the West Run General Commercial District, that's in, on Corporated Mon County. But we process what the applicant, the petitioner brought before us.
Oh, okay.
And regardless of, the way we, we have to look at these things is regarding, regardless of what the intended use by the owner or applicant is.
Absolutely.
We have to look at the long term. Um, and so, that's, that's, that's what we looked at in the staff report, and found it to be in, in, in keeping with what the long-term vision in terms of the growth framework for the city was, uh, the ability to encourage infill development. And so, that's why, that's why that determination was made.
And just as a point of clarification, when the Planning Commission heard these two cases, staff made no recommendation, correct?
Correct. Staff made no recommendation, but found, generally in terms of their analysis, that it was in keeping with.
So, to our attorney, we're here on the second reading, and we're considering possibly waiting these two for a third. It wouldn't necessarily be waiting on the third, it would be waiting on an update to the Pro district. Okay?
Member.
Yes?
Would any alteration of the current usage in Pro district affect these two that we're looking at now?
Would any, sorry, I have to say that again.
Let me try again, sorry.
Sorry.
Would, is there any, if there were any moderation of the Pro district, would it affect this particular two parcels we're looking at now?
Would it be grandfathered?
Oh, um, I would think it, again, as we've kind of discussed already, Pro is probably the most restrictive in terms of potential uses. So, looking at what's permitted by conditional use in other districts, like B1 or in the B2, I think the idea is to say, look at the, and see, um, you know, what could be maybe a modification of that. That would still provide the buffer, as discussed at the Planning Commission, but also still allow for development.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we were to pass this today, would that affect any possibility of the person who has an objection to?
That's, that's, that's compelling, plus.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying.
Is it influencing it in any manner?
I don't believe so, but I would defer to the city attorney for more guidance on that.
Counselor, if the, if city council were to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to allow more uses in the PRO district, then that amendment would apply to these properties as they are currently zoned in the PRO district. It wouldn't, it wouldn't keep a property owner from petitioning to amend the zoning map to change the classification. They could continue to request a change to a B2 if they chose to do so, and ask council to make a decision on that. Does that answer your question?
It does, but it's not satisfactory. It offers no immediate course of action.
Uh, I mean, as a, to, to answer the mayor's question, and to address that a bit more in depth, city council is considering a petition to amend the zoning map under West Virginia Code 8A-7-9. You consider that based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and whether the amendment would be consistent with your comprehensive plan. The city has adopted, in its city code, some procedures for hearing petitions to amend the zoning map under Article 1377, and there are mandatory provisions for the Planning Commission, which it's gone through, holding a public hearing, making a recommendation to council. Then, the petition is heard by council according to its rules, and it hasn't adopted specific rules for this type of consideration, other than its ordinary ordinance processes. So, council has discretion to consider adoption of the ordinance tonight, or to delay action on that, if you would like to.
If delaying action will give everybody a better feeling about what is being decided. It seems to me that questions already been determined, that it was appropriate, that these requests were appropriate to our comprehensive plan, and that the recommendation came through, that we should proceed to these two. If you want to throw into the next, and then kind of hold on these two, I'm not quite sure. I appreciate the reason why, but okay.
Well, it sounds like Pro needs updating no matter what. And it's whether these two properties need to be, um, considered under that, or whether these two properties that so far have been found to be fine.
Do you anticipate this subject being, the, the, the other requests, other than these two properties, being resolved soon? I mean, how, when we're talking about a table or a delay, what are we talking about?
So, Planning Commission, at their next hearing in June, will consider a zoning text amendment to the Pro district. Staff's evaluating that now. And based on the conversations we had this month with Planning Commission, we may need some more time to take a comprehensive approach, to look at what the petitioner and the next applications requesting, in light of the application to rezone that corner piece of property to a B2, we might need some time to do with that. Two months to do a review. And I think the guidance from Planning Commission, and I need to follow up, is to get to really do an evaluation on the Pro, B1, B2, and see what uses are going to be amenable, or would be amenable, to change, to achieve the objective of maintaining a buffer between residential districts and more commercial development along major thoroughfares in the community. So, I mean, it will, it'll, it'll take us a few months to do that.
Which is reasonable.
So.
Are we causing any kind of difficulty with, with this happening?
We may, and we may not. Depends upon the property owner's reaction. So, what is the will of council of, we can just not vote on this at this time, and then wait some guidance from the Planning Commission, to see how it best fits into whatever the new? So, it will likely be changing, changes to all three? B1, B2?
No, the, the, the guidance, the direction will be to modify the Pro district.
Just the Pro district.
Because if you look at, if you look at, uh, Table 133105, if you look at the Business 1 district and the B2 district, a lot of the uses that are permitted in the B2 are conditionally approved in the B1, moved to over into the Pro, and there are very few uses that are permitted in, in the Pro. So, kind of doing that evaluation, so, if the objective of the P, of the Pro is to provide a buffer, what uses, as was discussed earlier, council would be appropriate in that district that's currently not permitted. And then, looking at, would you want to make it by right? Or would you want to make that small bakery, as the deputy mayor mentioned, a conditional use, or permitted by right? Those are the things that we'd have to evaluate at the Planning Commission level, and then make a recommendation.
And bring it to us. So, are you wanting to wait to vote on this?
I think.
It's fine with me. I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure that we have some clarity, and we have some reasoning behind it.
I think I'm slightly ambivalent either way. I'm a little leery about 92 being developed, but also, like, I don't think that that's, should be a consideration here. Should be just whether or not this fits into our comprehensive plan, or... I could see how the Pro, redoing Pro is, is a consideration, but I thought it pertinent to bring up our constituents' concerns, but.
Absolutely.
Other than that, like, I think either way we go, I think, is appropriate. I think we've done that.
So, the third property that's the most adjacent to the neighborhood is on hold?
At the, at, yes, mayor, at the Planning Commission, that's what was tabled at the meeting last, last week.
But I don't know, this.
These bushes are on that property, so technically, they could take them out, and then there wouldn't be a buffer there, like.
But yeah, I don't.
I'm looking for some guidance from the two of you, if you have something that you'd like to offer. Otherwise, we will just do a straight-up vote on it.
Yeah. Um, I, like you said, I'm, I'm fine with voting on it. I'm also fine with us, um, not voting at all, but, uh, either way, unless the deputy mayor has stronger feelings about it, but I can see both sides of it, so.
Yes, me too.
I had concerns raised to me, and admittedly, I was out of town, and did not take a whole lot of time in between the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, and tonight's council meeting, to look into them, or to contact those owners who had concerns. So, my personal preference would be to wait at least until the, um, next meeting, because some of this was brought up just at Thursday night's Planning Commission meeting. And I want to make sure that even if we don't wait on the Pro, that I do have a chance to follow up with those constituents who raised concerns, but that's only me.
There have been numerous people raising concerns on both sides for a long time on those properties. And the one still has not been developed. Um, I'm all for a good neighborhood bakery. I just, a suggestion, not, not.
I think it's funny that, I don't know, I was looking, I have my Planning Commission packet, so I was looking at the land use table, and in the Pro, a neighborhood convenience store, neighborhood convenience store, is not allowed in the Pro district that's supposed to be a neighborhood buffer. I don't get it. There's a lot of things that are weird.
I think they were looking at, at straight-up, like, professional service offices and stuff like that for their buffer. And it was, and it went all along. There were even some small pieces that almost seemed like they weren't buildable, that were all Pro, that was a buffer, before some of these last Planning Commission.
Yeah, so Collins Ferry University, parts of Patterson-Van Boris.
Yes.
Are the.
And they were almost like little remnants that would really be nice to have for buffers, but they were very small, and they didn't seem to do what they needed to do exactly. They're a good idea, but we didn't quite figure out how to make it work. Any guidance down this way? Do you vote on it up or down, or what do you want to do?
Um, I'm okay with tabling it if that's a concern that our constituents have, and if we want to figure out all of them first before voting on them, especially if there's not that much of a rush, or if this won't hurt anything if we wait a little bit. But that's just where I fall on that.
That feels to be like the general consensus.
Consensus?
It feels like that's, uh, waiting to vote on it, seems to be.
These gentlemen want their, their B2 for sure, so, so, we would need to have, kind of feel like there might be a change. I'm not sure that this will affect, um...
Much.
Because it's the, it's not the district they're going to, it's a district they're in.
But if more becomes permissible in that district that they're already in, and they don't end up with a seven-floor hotel next to the neighborhood there, I think is the general concern, at least with doing, um, other Pro district along the same area.
So, I'm looking for a motion, or a motion, or just a general consensus, whether we want to vote on this or not.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, just a note, on the, the applicant's, um, application, the proposed land use was restaurant-retail. That's what the proposed, uh, land use was listed on their application. So, just.
Which we're not supposed to.
But we're not supposed to think just about what they want to do.
Correct.
We have to think about what it could potentially be in the future.
Yes, thank you.
But maybe restaurant and retail will now be allowed in the Pro district, I don't know.
I don't know if we'll open it enough for these two gentlemen, they're just wanting to change. Counselor Butcher, this is your word. I think they're wanting to, to switch to B2. One of them has already developed, one of them's not developed. If we're comfortable with what, with going into the B2, which some of the neighborhood for sure is not, um, I just don't know what will change in three months. That's my, if something will change that would affect them, that would mean that they would, I just, is that likely to be in Pro?
What? What is likely to be in Pro?
The landloose, the land use that they want.
That's going to be on the analysis, right?
Yeah.
I mean, staff can obviously provide some guidance and recommendations, but... And just to recall, what the comprehensive plan called for is as a corridor enhancement area. The, the permitted development types, I'm just flipping in through your packet real quick, to, so I can list them all appropriately. But in a, um, in a corridor enhancement area, multifamily, civic and institutional, neighborhood center, mixed-use, community, commercial, office research, and green space, were all identified as acceptable or permitted development types, based on the character and development patterns in the areas in that immediate vicinity. So, that may muddy the waters, but just to, that's what the corridor.
Does that sound like B2 to you, or does that sound like an updated Pro?
I mean, we've already, I.
It sounds like a lot of what's in the B2, is what's being listed there.
Is this one of the areas that's currently being evaluated during this round of comprehensive planning?
Yeah, I don't, not sure if it's a, a focus area that would require more study, but our consultants and our team are looking at the city as a whole, so.
A focus area is what, we generally have, what, like, eight or 10 focus areas that we do down deeper?
Correct. So, I, I don't know what the northern extent of it is. I think, uh, Burrows and Chestnut is maybe the, the northern extent of one of the focus areas, that would include Patterson and Van Boris, and parts of Collins Ferry.
So, we have one complaint from a constituent. We have not had anyone come, did you have a lot of people that came to your Planning Commission meetings regarding these two properties?
No, ma'am.
Am I mistaken, are you still sending out letters to the adjacent properties when these requests come in?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the public, public has sufficient time to, to respond, is that correct?
That's correct. Based on, not based on our.
The other thing I would suggest is that, you know, the, we've already had an evaluation on these two properties requesting this, which we accepted last meeting, and, and... which we accepted last meeting and put through, waiting for the second reading. Even if we went back and then we looked at pro, would it change significantly the, the initial request or the reason for the request? Or, or would it change the activity if they're going to build the same thing because you're now giving them the allowance to do that in a different category? I appreciate we want to be responsive, we want to be responsible. But on the other hand, I, I see this as probably, the decision has already properly been correctly assessed, advertised, debated, but forth in, in a manner that is, you know, fulfills the city's requirements. And to wait a week, to wait, you know, to wait three months, to wait even longer for an consultant to come in and look at the whole zoning process, that may or may not affect this at all anyway.
Again, I, I think the evaluation of the pro zone, we'll look at the B1, B2 and look at those uses and see what's appropriate to still meet, meet the objective of that district. At least that's the direction that staff's taking based on the conversation.
It seems to me that we have certain expectations for each of those. In other words, performance is when we, when we say it's going to be pro, this is going to be B1, B2. And I'm not quite sure, given the past, that we're still seeing that kind of put-together neighborhood business. Are we talking about that two-parlors? Are we talking about, are we talking about smoke zone? Are we talking about, you know, wonderful to have a bakery and a bookstore? I haven't seen a whole lot of those.
So neighborhood business is still allowed in B2, correct? A neighborhood business is still allowed in B2, correct?
You have to look at the, what the use is. Yeah. So like, for instance, I can pull up the zoning, the table here. If we look at, pull up, a bakery-retail, for example, not permitted in the pro, but permitted by right in a B1 and B2, for example. Councilor Butcher mentioned, I think, a brew pub, not permitted in the pro, conditionally approved in the B1, permitted by right in the B2.
What was that one?
Conditionally approved in a B1, permitted by right in a B2.
Brew pub.
Oh, a brew pub.
But that's, that's, that's the analysis that staff's going to have to weigh, based on what the objective of the pro was and looking what the other districts are.
I think these two properties are on their way to B2 and that's in line with the comprehensive plan and wanting to have those developed more in that the pro on the end would be kind of the buffer to the neighborhood at this point, just looking at your comprehensive plan and looking at what's allowed in a B2. But it looks like something, they're not large properties, so some of the things that a large property would bring, you won't have just because of the size of the property. And, you know, it's, can't be something very large because it isn't that large, the properties aren't that large.
And there's controls in place from a regulatory standpoint with respect to landscaping and things, directing lighting away from residential neighborhoods that are already in place in the code to help when business development abuts residential neighborhoods. And that's noted in the staff report.
All right, vote or not?
Call the question.
All right. I think we should vote. Phil?
Okay.
All right. Do we have a second here?
We already had a motion and a second.
Pardon?
We already motioned a second.
Okay, excellent. Let's call the question. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. I guess that could only be for the first one, so now we're going to do the second one. Consideration approval of a second reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the seventh ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district fifteen, tax map fifty-five, parcel ninety-three, commonly known as six ninety-nine Borough Street from pro professional residential and office district to B2 service business district amending article thirteen thirty-one of the planning and zoning code of the city of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit heretofore attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. The first reading was four, four, twenty, twenty-three. And our planner.
Any other questions I can answer?
It's the same.
It's the parcel to the south.
Similar.
Yes, it's, it's already been developed and, and the same request by the applicant.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I assume that we have the same kind of discussion and consideration with this item as we did with the last item? Is there anything to add to that?
I'm more okay with this one than the last one.
Yes, I would say so. It's already been developed. All right. We call the question? See a clerk if you call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. The first reading was five, two, twenty, twenty-three. If the, Kevin Tenenbaum, the finance director, please come on.
Good evening, council. This is a revision of the general fund. This is year-end maintenance, basically. We projected out revenues and expenses to see where some possible overages or shortages may be and hopefully resolve any potential compliance issues at the end of the year with some expenses being over budget. I can provide further detail or answer your questions if you like.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this? Oh, pardon me, we'll do a motion first.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. All right. Now we're on questions. Does anyone have a question for our finance director?
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay there for the next one. All right. If the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the coal severance fund. First reading was five, two, twenty, twenty-three. And thank you for coming up. Our finance director.
Same exercise for the coal severance, much smaller scope. But same exercise, looked at what we had been receiving for coal severance and projected out to the end of the year. And one hundred percent of it goes to the parks and rec. So it was a pretty, pretty easy adjustment.
Thank you. Motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. We'll tell her not to spend it all in one place. There we go.
We've already paid her the first two quarters of the year and the third one will be coming shortly soon as this is approved.
All right. So any other comments or questions? Otherwise, if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. So I'm not going to go through the rules unless somebody is here wishing to speak. I don't think there's any names, are there? All right. So the public portion is open. Going once, going twice, close the public portion. Now we're down to new business. The first item is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for the Morganton Municipal Airport Streetscape Design. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. This resolution authorizes the city manager to make application to, for a TAP grant or transportation alternative grant through the Department of Transportation. This grant, this particular application is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the construction of a streetscape project at the municipal airport, which would go from the mile ground to the actual terminal. It would include design construction of and access, and American with Disability Act accessibility infrastructure and conduits for new lighting and signage. The, just for your information, the, the airport is applying for an additional TAP grant. Most of this grant will go towards the design of the project. The, the airport is, is applying for a second TAP grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will be coming shortly. So it's, it's, I just wanted you to know that this is primarily for design, even though it may go towards some construction, but didn't want you to think that we're just designing something and having a nice design sitting on the shelf, that we are actually applying for some additional dollars for the construction of the project.
Good. Are there any?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our manager?
I have a question. Are sidewalks part of the mile ground expansion that they're doing right now? Are we going to have a sidewalk to nowhere? They're going to have sidewalks.
Absolutely, yeah.
May only be on one side, is that correct? Yep. But indeed.
Better than what we have now.
Sidewalks, I think they might already be there underneath. I think they're already there underneath all the equipment. Hard to see, but I think they're there. Yeah. I avoid the mile ground at all costs.
Do it every day.
Smart woman. So any other questions? If the clerk would please call the roll.
Yes.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, it's exciting. Passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for the Chestnut Street landscape design. And this is for our assistant manager.
Sure. So this resolution would allow the city to submit a request through the TAP grant to, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to do the design of a streetscape project on Chestnut Street. So we've done several other blocks within the city and this would essentially continue that. So Chestnut Street in the downtown connects and is somewhat parallel to High Street and parallel to Spruce and the Don Knotts. So this would essentially do the design for promoting shared use for automobiles, bicycles, upgrading sidewalks, ADA ramps, lighting, trees, anything like that. Kind of, that's the general gist of streetscape design. So this would just be figuring all that out in the process.
Do we know from what to what? Chestnut from Willie to where? Foundry?
That would be to be determined, but I would imagine it would be the bulk of it, yes.
All the way to.
Typically, you would do the entire length of something or a key corridor. We, we did the full corridor when we did Pleasant. I think Walnut was originally intended to be the full corridor, but that was quite a while ago. And whenever you did that, you actually applied for designing construction all at once. And so what we found, because of all the faults, that we weren't able to do what we were originally intending and had to scale back that project. So this particular project likely would be from kind of end to end.
That'd be great.
Or at least like Willie to Pleasant. University of Pleasant, whatever it is at that, the top.
Does that include the area in front of the garage, or is that more ours? That faces Chestnut.
This was on Chestnut. That Chestnut garage, I would imagine that would include that, yes.
Be nice to do something wow there. All right. So do we do a motion?
To approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? We've already done most of that. If you'd please call the roll. Yes, Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for Spruce Street, Streetscape Design. Back to Ms. Mazzarelli.
Thank you. So again, this is just allowing us to apply for a TAP grant to do a design for streetscape improvements to Spruce Street. It is a three-lane road and does not really have any specific pedestrian accommodations or cyclist accommodations. The pedestrian accommodations aren't the best. If you've been trying to walk on some of those roads, some places, the sidewalks are only three feet wide. But this would be, again, a kind of a full streetscape project, likely anticipated that it would be kind of the main downtown, probably at least from Pleasant through Willie, very similar to Chestnut, doing everything from sidewalks, pedestrian, cyclist accommodations, lighting where appropriate, landscaping, and, you know, looking into whether or not that road needs to be three full traffic lanes.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Our assistant manager, yes.
Nice to see if we get, we can expect it to be finished anytime twenty, thirty, twenty, thirty-five.
The TAP grants have actually started moving a little bit faster. So the airport project that city manager Haas mentioned, we are actually already finishing up with design and had one award for construction funding. But when we got that award and inflation, we anticipate that being a little higher. So that, the one we talked about earlier was actually some additional funding to bring that project to completion. So I think the goal of these, typically you don't get awarded for a year, so we're approving them now. But if we're on a track record, it'll probably be next March before we find out if we actually get them. And then they get to work on the design. And you have to have the design done before you can apply for construction dollars. And then when you apply, that's a, a year later. So they're not the fastest projects, but they have gotten better. And what I was going to add is the reason why these have to come via a resolution to city council before even applying is because they typically do have a twenty percent match. And so essentially, it's, it's saying, if we give you money, you're going to pay your match. So that's why it comes to council before we ever get it, so. And then you have to actually accept the agreements and, so that comes through council, I believe, too.
Thank you.
I would like to see us actually push pretty hard for a bicycle lane on Spruce Street. I think that two lanes of traffic and a protected bicycle lane would make a lot of sense there. Our, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of cyclists in our community and not a lot of, downtown's not very cyclist-friendly. And I believe this is a conversation that my husband, who is a cyclist, and I have had with assistant manager Mazzarelli more than once. I think he's, he's brought up to her the need for a Spruce Street bike lane many times. I think especially as we're. I think especially as we're looking at some of our connections at the lower end of downtown, whether that's the road that goes down from Foundry past Andrew White's Guitar Shop down to the rail trail, or the one that goes under the Pleasant Street Bridge behind the law office down to the Deckers Creek Rail Trail. Connecting those to our farmer's market, our library, a lot of our essential services that are downtown would be really great. So, let's push for a bike lane.
I think, to back that up, our consultant that was working with MMPO on the Bike Ped Plan, that was supposed to be one of two options for a pop-up, was to, was to mark that off temporarily so that people could see, you know, put up some protection, but it wouldn't be permanent to try that out, and we did not have the opportunity to do that, but I would relish that. So, maybe we could even try to have that be like a demonstration project or something while we're awaiting design and implementation.
We're getting new e-bikes this week. I'm sure my husband would love nothing more than to be able to go for a ride on the rail trail and me be comfortable enough riding a downtown street up to the farmer's market.
There we go. There we go. So, um, now I'm trying to remember where they made a motion, I believe we did. So, if you would please, uh, call the roll.
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Verify that and call the roll. Thank you.
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. That is a great one. Passes unanimously. City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple of items that I would like to share with the City Council. Councilor Kueke and I, this morning, attended the Economic Vitality Committee of the Main Street Morgantown, and I was, I was impressed with the level of commitment of, of that committee in terms of creating a, a foundation and a framework whereon we, we can identify existing properties that can be marketed, that we can actually participate with property owners in the, in the, in the marketing of their property and encouraging them through various incentives that we have, all the way from interior improvements to facade improvements. But we can't do that without having a good inventory of, of the property. So, that, that's one side of it. The other is that the ultimate goal is to be able to have a, have a document that we can actually use and, and, and publish that will make those properties available to potential investors in, in our downtown area. And finally, there was a really good report, a positive report, at least over the last month or two of safety concerns that have been, have surfaced over the last six months that you all have grappled with down there. There continue to be some, but it seems as though the, the level, the intensity and the, and the, the number of those safety concerns seem to be, have, have declined, which is a really good sign to me, because what it does, it starts opening the door for the perception that the downtown is safe, and that's what we're really after, to increase usership and access by, by the community. The other item that I wanted to make sure to at least report publicly, publicly, is that Republic, our, our solid waste services, will, are beginning to unveil the new cards, and we anticipate that there will be questions and some individuals, it'll be new changes is difficult for all of us. What we're, we're encouraging is for individuals to utilize it for, for six months, and then if it just doesn't make sense for them, then, then we can sit down and talk to them individually and see if, if there's not a better alternative for them. But at least at this point in time, that's being unveiled and, and the cards are coming. Finally, talking to our airport director, there, we've had, I, I, several of us attended the, the graduation of the, the police, of some of our police officers from the Fairmont State, the first class of the Fairmont State Academy. Great reports, actually, for a first year. Three of our officers graduated from there, and as I, as I spoke to a number of the, the attending police leadership from different areas, they're experiencing very similar things, and I think it's an issue across the country, not just in law enforcement, in, for instance, just in our airport staffing. We're, we've experienced some really difficult times in, in staff, being fully staffed there, and there's a lot of stress on, on the airport staff right now to, to try to keep up with all of the demands for maintenance, but they're doing the best they can. In addition to that, Southern Airlines, there's a shortage of pilots nationally, and it's creating some real issues, particularly for the smaller airlines. The larger airlines can incentivize to agree, in, in the form of large bonuses, sign-on bonuses for, for airline pilots, and, and it has served to we, to, to shorten or to reduce the number of available pilots in, in the smaller airlines. So, Southern is grappling as well or better than, than many of these smaller airlines, but you will see some, some impact on, on different routes and, and different flights that they, that they provide. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
With reference to the pilots, I think they were even trying to get pilots to locate, to relocate, and hiring some experienced pilots that might want to like semi-retire in our area and fly. There were a lot of really good ideas over time, and I don't know how any of them have ended up.
It's really hard to, some of the large airlines are, are offering $100,000 bonuses, sign-on bonuses. Now, how do you argue, how does a?
How does a small airlines compete with that?
Compete with that? I mean, it just, it's really ridiculous and really has, has gotten out of hand, and at some point, there's gonna have to be some, part of the problem is that the training requirements for airline pilots today is, is three or four times what it was just a few years ago, and so it's becoming harder and harder to, to not only find individuals who are willing to put that kind of time in, but that can complete that, that, that level of training. And so, all of that together, it's, it's really a perfect storm for airlines.
Well, good luck to us on that. Does anyone have any questions for the manager? Report from the City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. I just wanna say that here we are again, following up on City Manager Haas's discussion about law enforcement. We are holding entry-level exams again, and that exam will be June 17th, that's a Saturday, at 9:00 AM, and that will be in the Public Safety Building. Currently, we have 17 applications. Our last entry-level exam was in March of this year, and we ended with 27 applicants. And out of those 27, 10 candidates passed the written and the agility, however, none passed the background, so we, we need to get those folks in. Someone called today, a fantastic candidate called today, and I spoke with, with him about applying. He already applied, but, you know, I think we just need to continue to do our best at recruiting, and I know that everyone's been working really hard, but word of mouth says a lot, and we have a lot of good people to help share that information. So, June 17th at 9:00 AM, the Public Safety Building, applications can be received at the City Clerk's office and on our website at MorgantownWV.gov. You can apply online and pay online. So, it's a lights-out, easy application process, but if someone would like to come in, we can certainly give them an application and take care of that in the office. And then also, October 28th, we set another exam, entry-level exam for Saturday, October 28th, at the Public Safety Building.
And that's planning ahead.
It is, yeah. I wanna congratulate those who graduated from the academy and Fairmont State Academy. I know it's an honor. And then also, I wanna announce that Officer Brad Palmer was, took the Sergeant's Promotional Exam, and after a successful medical exam, he will be promoted to Sergeant. So, congratulations to him for his hard work. And then I wanna say, hate to see you go, Ixia. It's been fun. I appreciate your genuine love for people and the youth, and some of the things that you brought up in the past were new to me and educational, and there are times I had to look it up, but I appreciate learning new things from you, and it's nice to see your genuine interest in those things, and so I just wanna say thank you, and it's been a pleasure, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Report from a City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The Departments of Engineering and Public Works and Development Services are continuing to move forward with implementing City Works as a citywide permitting solution, and we are currently working on updating terms and commissions, conditions rather, and comments to the public and applicants for those forms to be inputted into the system, sort of in the system with those. That should provide a unified permitting process that will make the city a lot more efficient with processing the applications that require review by multiple departments, and we're trying to do that upfront work to get it running smoothly from the start. I updated today and circulated a checklist that we've provided to the building official and deputy building officials that covers the process of performing inspections and issuing notices of violation, pursuing demolition, and then filing liens under the building code when that's required. I believe the Development Services Department has a substantial budget for demolition of properties intended to be used for scenarios when property owners are not willing or able to do those themselves, and so that's intended to assist with that process. Our, our building official is covering that very well, but I corresponded with him a day, today about those updates and reviews. There's a group of city staff that's been working to bring some food trucks to the Morgantown Marketplace Pavilion during lunchtime hours, and I recently talked with an investigator with the State Fire Marshal's Office about using the pavilion for that purpose. State Fire Marshal has jurisdiction to review applications of the fire code to public buildings, and they indicated there would be no problem with that use at the pavilion. I prepared a form of application and permit for food trucks that would be interested in providing that, and those are now being reviewed by staff, so hopefully they'll be able to move forward with that project. I would also like to say thank you, Councilor Vega, for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. Wish you the best, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilor Buganam? Are you wanting to begin?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start by saying congrats to my friend Officer Schmittl on reaching retirement. I know that he's always been really proud to be a part of our police department, and I appreciate his service. And the next time, before we meet next time, we will have, our high school seniors will have graduated, so congratulations to the class of 2023. That graduation will be next, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, in addition to their senior awards. We have the MMMPO meeting coming up that I get to attend with Councilor Kueke and Mayor Celine. I always look forward to that, and seeing what's going on in our greater Morgantown area, with our tree board meeting my, next Monday. I would also like to tell anyone in the First Ward area that would like to take part in our neighborhood yard sale, we have a signup for a Google Doc on Facebook where their house will be added to a Google map, so that all the neighbors will know where all of the treasures are in the First Ward neighborhood the day of June 24th, from 8:00 to 2:00. Let me see, I have a whole bunch of notes. And then, there's something else I wanted to say about that. Oh, with the neighborhood, I would really encourage everybody to please remember that we have leash laws and to keep your animals on a leash at all times when in the park. While your pet may be friendly, those they approach that are on a leash may become very high strung around other animals, and that's not fair to our furry friends that are scared of other dogs, for instance. And then last, certainly not least, but most importantly, thank you, Councilor Vega, for being so welcoming when I started here a year and a half ago, and thank you for your service to the city and becoming a friend over the last two years. I really appreciate getting to know you. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Councilor Kueke?
Thank you. I, I hope everybody likes my new wardrobe. I'm stuck with it, I think, for a period of time. In answer to your question, I had cervical melopathy, and I went back in and decompressed a nerve and fused a few of the bones, so hopefully I won't have this too long, but it became a procedure that I really put off and put off, put off, to the point where they say, well, you know, you can put it off and take the consequence, or you could do it and perhaps stop any consequence. So, given the choice, it was finally time to make the decision and did. But in any case, I'm here, less than comfortable, but back with not too much disruption, and appreciating all the help that I got at home and my family and what they did and kicked in, and it's been very nice, and I can understand then, even more so, actually, the idea of the importance of having family nearby. So, congratulations. I think you did an excellent job while you were here, and I think you will continue to do an excellent job no matter where you go, and I wish you all the happiness you can find.
Thank you.
Nice.
Well?
Councilor Vega?
Well, last week, we had, Sister Cities hosted a Cinco de Mayo event, and I didn't have any crazy expectations, but it really blew it out of the water. It was a great event. We had so many sponsors come in and give folks free food. We had live music, which was beautiful, by the way. We had high school students performing traditional dances, wearing traditional clothing, and it was really great. So, I just wanna give a special shout-out to Shiny Diamonds, La Tapatía, Monarca, Plaza Azteca, Los Mariachis, Tamales Oaxaca, Hoot and Howell, and Fair River Trade for their help and giving things to the community. And we wanna give a special thank you to the Morgantown High School students and their Spanish teacher, Lola Contreras, who basically led the entire event, and it was really good. A lot of folks showed up and were in and out, so it was really exciting to see everybody come together. Next time, there will be a Latino Cultural Month instead of a Cinco de Mayo, so this was kind of a cool little send-off to the Cinco de Mayo. And again, I just wanna say that I've really appreciated working with all of you. I've learned a lot. I feel like I've grown up a lot, so I appreciate it. I can't wait to see what comes out of this council, and I appreciate all of your sacrifices, as I know you don't get told that a lot, and y'all sacrifice a lot, spending time with your families, missing dinner. It's crazy times out here, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ixia and I are usually hangry together. We're like, didn't get dinner first. We're gonna be here until 11:00 PM. I attended the Cinco de Mayo celebration, and I really enjoyed the trivia and the fashion show, so I thought that it was a great event. My husband and I were able to stop by for an hour or so. I also attended the Fairmont State graduation with the manager and assistant manager. I also attended the Fairmont State graduation with the manager and assistant manager. That's a good resource for us to have. We were able to get a lot of officers graduated relatively quickly after hiring them because sometimes in between the hiring and when you can actually get someone into and through academy, they lose interest or find another opportunity. So having more than one at our disposal will hopefully go a long way. Oh, just touching on what the city manager said about the Economic Vitality Committee through Main Street Morgantown. I missed this morning's meeting because I was traveling, but there is a new program that they are running in downtown called Restore Morgantown. If you walk along the street, there are a few vacant storefronts next to ten two oh two, up High Street attached there, and those have been kind of staged. One actually has furniture in there, one has some window clings, one just has some decorations, but that is an initiative trying to make some of our empty storefronts, which we actually have less than less. There's a lot of businesses opening up downtown. But that is a program that they started to fill those and say, this could be your deli or this could be your bookstore. So if you get a chance, stop by and take a look. If you know of a property owner downtown who is interested in having their storefront decorated, please get in touch with Main Street, and we would love to take a look at it. Yeah, while I was out of town, I did get a lot of concerns, and I'm still trying to sort through those and get back to everyone. A couple specifically stood out to me that I sent along to city management and staff. I had multiple types of trash concerns. I know that it was student move-out weekend, but there were a lot, a lot, a lot of trash spread along Willie Street. I got complaints about Price, Dallas, Forest, Health Right. There were a lot of trash. I hope that that was just with an increase from student move-out, but I do think it is important that we have code enforcement who is willing to really hold property owners accountable when their trash is left along the street week-long, as usually happens along Willie Street and other places, because then we have animals or folks getting into those or cars hitting them. I saw a car run over a trash bag and spread it all over the, like, that's when it gets really gross and we have a lot of litter cleanup needed, and as someone who spends a lot of time cleaning up litter, it would be great to have less of it. Also, as far as trash goes, I've heard a lot of concerns about the trash carts and what people will do with overflow from carts. If they have more trash produced in a certain week than will fit in those carts, so I sent them to the new website to ask questions. I don't know where they should have gone, but I was out of town, and that seemed like what that website was created for, right? So we have a lot of traffic concerns in my neighborhood right now. I believe I'm going to be reaching out to Mr. Davis and Mr. Gatlin with Engineering and Public Works for the second time this year so far. In the last couple of months, a car has come speeding down my street and ran off the road and went through my neighbor's driveway, through their fence. There is a home down over the hill behind there. If this continues happening, I'm afraid that someone is going to get very hurt, especially with, our neighborhood tends to be a cut-through, and I've heard some complaints on Richwood in between Woodburn and Jerome Park as well. Our neighborhood tends to be a cut-through from people coming from downtown or the Mile Ground, and I'm really concerned about how additional and continued work on the Mile Ground and more and more traffic there while they're completing that work is going to affect those neighborhoods, and we need to find a way to slow people down there. We also heard some safety concerns about downtown, and I spoke with the Director Jaeger of Development Services last week about some of those. I'm sure everyone's heard that there was a shooting in one of our bars. My concern is, it is now the end of the school semester, and it's my understanding that our overnight bar detail is scaled back a lot or done away with for the summer, and that seems to be when we're having, we have had fewer of those incidents, shootings and stabbings, but they do still happen, and I think that overnight, or late at night anyways, is more important than ever to have some sort of presence downtown, not only for prevention but for response. It's my understanding that we still haven't even caught the shooting suspect from last weekend, so just some concerns that I've mostly already forwarded on, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge that I received those complaints and did forward them along and bring them up to you all, because I'm not sure if you all are hearing the same things that I'm hearing or not. But on a more positive note, tomorrow, Main Street is hosting a Cruisin', four to eight PM. The classic cars will all be along High Street, so come down and check that out. On Thursday, Main Street is hosting a pop-up plaza on the Courthouse Square at lunchtime. There will be a couple of vendors and activities and benches, just a nice thing to do on your lunch break if you're downtown. Saturday morning, the Woodburn Association of Neighbors is having our every-other-month cleanup in Whitmore Park and along Richwood and Charles Avenues. We'll meet behind Mario's Fish Bowl at the top of Whitmore at ten AM. And then Saturday evening is the Moonlight Market in downtown. So lots of events and activities happening downtown over the next few days. I hope that some people, some new faces will come out, and I'll see you there.
Thank you. Councilor Butcher.
So we're getting close to Pride Month, so there, I was like going to list a bunch of different Pride events that were going to happen, but there's so many that are going on right now that it's, it's like basically every week. So between Project Rainbow, Morgantown Pride, and Oddball Coffee Roaster, which is actually doing one too, there's all kinds of Pride events that are going on in the city, which is really great to see. So if you're interested in going to any kind of Pride event, there's going to be one in your busy space schedule that you can fit in, I assure you. Just look for that stuff online. I spent all last week in Tennessee to close out a housing organizing fellowship that I attended with, over the course of eight months, with Lori Stark. She was formerly of the ACLU. I bring that up because I wanted to mention where it took place, which was the Highlander Center. This is not a place that I was aware of before going, but was a central place for the Civil Rights Movement. It's where the Montgomery Bus Boycott was organized, a citizenship school, which was a, during the Civil Rights Movement, was a place in which Black people were taught about citizenship so that they could have the right to vote, because before you could vote, you had to answer citizenship questions. And also, the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee was, had many organizing meetings there. SNC is what they're often go by, and they were integral in the Civil Rights Movement. And it's been kind of like a community education center for a hundred years and has worked to educate people across backgrounds on social justice and environmental justice and economic justice issues. The place was so good at its job that it was, the land and the organization was seized by the state of Tennessee in the sixties, basically for being an integrated school. And so I was, just wanted to like mark that and just say that I was honored to be there amongst a lot of, a long history of organizers that have worked on all kinds of different issues and the kind of restorative justice that they're looking to enact through that kind of place. And then I'll get to the sappy part of my comments. Councilwoman Vega, I'm not really sure I could have done this job without you being here, but also I know that I wouldn't be able to continue to doing this, be doing this job if I hadn't had you here. And so you've been supportive of everything that I've tried to do and have been since the moment I met you, when we didn't even really know each other that well, when we met on a Zoom call. And I know both of us have been very overwhelmed by this job at times and the kind of way that it's posed a stark dichotomy between the work that we've used, we're used to doing in politics, which is like kind of more pressuring electoral work than it is doing the electoral work. But I want you to know publicly that I'll always show up for you and I'll always be there when you need a straight white cis man to tell her straight what.
Get it in writing.
I want them in a contract.
Sure. You're one of the fiercest people I've ever met, and it's been an honor to be your friend, and my wife's going to miss you, and so is Jordan and Quinn, so thank you.
Thanks.
Chicago, nine hours away.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I still got family there too, so it's fine.
All right. We better keep it moving.
I was like doing okay.
I know. That's lovely.
Thank you.
So we'll avoid that talk for a minute here. So I really appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate it that you all cover so many different groups that none of us, each of us could not cover all of them by ourselves. On Saturday, I happened to go to the Arts Walk, and I got to hear a really nice kind of a house concert at Andrew White Guitars, which was Jamie Lester playing. I'd not heard him play on his own, and then he had his sculpture there, and I just really appreciate all of the people who opened up their businesses and put out refreshments and kind of go the extra mile to make our downtown so welcoming. And I think a lot of times, we don't know what's going on and all the nooks and crannies, I understand. I didn't make it up to Spruce Street Church to see history that was being promoted and shown around at the Spruce Street Methodist Church, which would have been really cool. There were just so many things to do that day that it was impossible to get to them all, but I appreciate the musicians that were playing, even though it was dripping. So Jim Truman and a group were at the Met Theater, kind of under the awning. I think earlier he played somewhere else on High Street, like at the courthouse, but then there was another fellow at the courthouse who was singing, and then the sun came out for a minute, which was nice. But it just was a very, very complete event, even though it was raining, had been raining. People were, the vendors showed up and wrapped their tents with plastic to try to keep wetness off of their work. So I just think we live in a great community with a lot of great activities going on, and I know that out at the Botanic Garden for West Virginia Botanic Garden Day that Legislature has designated, they were out there. I did get to hear there was a concert with a community orchestra that's sponsored through the university, but includes both university members and community members, and it certainly is an all-ages group. Some are over eighty and some are college students, so really covers the gamut of who plays, and they have that in their new event center at the Botanic Garden. So there's just so many things going on, and people have so many good ideas that I just appreciate everyone here, appreciate our staff that helps when we're working on events, which brings us to this Saturday, eleven o'clock, the Courthouse Square is Gene Vance Day. And for this particular Gene Vance, so Gene Vance died in Afghanistan, and this day remembers not only one individual but all veterans, and so there will be a flag raised in the County Courthouse Square, and that flag flew over Camp Vance in Afghanistan. That's where it last flew. It was, I guess, the last flag that was flown there, and so it will be flying here above our courthouse on Saturday. So that's a pretty cool bit of meaning, memorabilia, and honor that we're going to be able to fly that flag. What time is that? Eleven o'clock, and I have a few things that need to be read besides what I'm going to be reading, so if any council members would like to come, I have, if you let me know, I have a statement from two different legislators that need to be, actually national legislators that need to be read, so. But yeah, that will be, that will be very memorable. There will be some singing, there will be statements read, there will be a reading of veterans who gave their lives in West Virginia. There's just a very, very nice event and worth your time. And Councilor Kueke has been helping with this event, even though he isn't feeling great, so I very, very much appreciate everyone that, all of the things that people have been doing. Also, tomorrow is, so there's Transportation Week, so this year's Transportation Week is going on at the Alumni Center tomorrow, and I did not look up the times, but it's the MAP organization, Morgantown Area Partners, is partnership, is sponsoring it, so it would, the information about it would be online. Then back to this lovely Councilor Vega, I think a lot has been said, and I really, really appreciate your work. I appreciate your willingness to step up when needed. I appreciate your willingness to listen and learn and represent your neighborhood nicely and show up at the, at the Bow Park venue to see all the things that's going on and transfer information to your neighborhood and step up and be the chair, all the different things that you've done.
Thank you.
And plus your gainful employment and all the things that you've done through that here, so thank you for coming and making your mark.
Thank you for having me.
Shake your hand. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting, except for we need to have an executive session if someone would leave us in. I have it right here if you...
Remove the pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four two nine, we enter executive session to discuss acquisition or development of real estate in the Sixth Ward.
Second. Great. All right. We're done. Shall we?
Go on in.